Good evening, being that it's six o'clock, I'll call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty And before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to remember Jim Engelbert, who passed away over the weekend.
No.
Steve Stecker, would you like to say a word about Jim?
Certainly. James Engelbert, known to my family actually as Uncle Bert, was born in 1941. He graduated from St. Mary High School in 1959 and then joined the Air Force. He was stationed in West Berlin as a Russian translator in the early 60s. But after serving his country in the military, he returned home and became an instrument technician, a labor union president, a United Way executive, and the executive director for the Labor Management Council. He believed in service and at various times he served as a youth sports coach, volunteered at numerous church and school events, and was an adjuvant in the local VFW. Jim was also a dedicated community member, serving three different times on the library board, most recently as the Chair of the Board from 2016 to 2020. Jim helped oversee a major library expansion and renovation project that was completed in 2003. He helped to restructure the board to include a governance committee and a marketing and resource development committee, and advocated for county and city library support. In 2018, the Wisconsin Library Association named him Trustee of the Year. Jim also served on the Manassia Common Council for several years. Jim had an open and commonsensical approach to government. He served on the Nina-Manassia Joint Fire Commission, as well as chaired the Personnel Committee for the city. He used his business and labor experience to help negotiate a labor contract at the Police Department, which ended a few year impasse. Jim was also a visionary for Manassia. For example, Jim was part of the council when the group was faced with the difficulty decision to demolish the former bank building on Main Street. This decision helped to pave the way for the new office building downtown, which has helped the revitalization efforts. In addition to all of Jim's volunteer work and his professional career, he was also a huge family man. He loved his wife of Helen for almost 32 years, and his six children and their partners, his six grandchildren, and family and friends beyond count. He loved putting golf, watching sports, deer hunting, and playing and usually winning at sheep's head and cribbage. He loved to travel the world and spend time up north at his family's cottage. I think I can speak for my family as well as his Manassia community family that we all loved him and he certainly loved his community, and we know that he will be missed by everyone that knew him.
Did we ask what happened, Tim?
He passed away.
Okay.
I heard it was from Colton.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Jim, for everything you've done for our community. And with that, we'll move on to the roll call. Clerk Crocker.
Alderman Smith. There. Alderman Tomgady.
Here.
Alderman Tedgady.
Here.
Alderman Rappala.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Yep.
Alderman Sevanik.
There.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
All are present.
First item of the agenda is a temporary suspension of the rules. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Am I still on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to flip from screens here so that I can go to that. So anyways, Mayor, at this time, I would move that we suspend the rules temporarily for the Common Council and the mayor, so that we may be able to have this web conference.
Second. So motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is the report of department heads, staff and consultant. The first item is Director McKenney with an update on the COVID-19 situation here in the Fox Valley.
I'll need you to give me a screen if possible.
Oh, God.
I think I can do that. Let me try to find you here. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to just give you a little update on the status of COVID-19 in our community. Today's numbers. We have 778 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 615 have recovered, 4,601 individuals have tested negative, and sadly, we've reported an additional death. We have 154 active cases right now and 36 hospitalizations. Compared to the last two-week period, our cases rose from 151 in the previous two-week period to 252. And the case rate rose from 1,076.5 to 1,439.2 cases per 100,000 population. And this activity level is a standard method that health departments use across the state to look at our case level and how we're doing in our community. This is classified as very high. You can see on the chart, 252 confirmed cases in the last two weeks, or 1,439.2 cases per 100,000 people. Our burden is very high. And this is a slide just showing the trajectory. We're on a steep climb right now. I, with a lot of my health officers, have been watching these rates and trends and have been really actively discussing with people how we can mitigate this and bring these case rates down, and I'll talk about that a little later. I want you to see a little bit about the age groups and the cases that we're seeing in the last two weeks. When we first started, if you look at the cumulative cases by age groups, that's, I'm sorry, the cumulative total cases is from April 1st until now. But you can see in the last two weeks, we've seen a really significant rise across all age groups. So we know now that 72 children ages 6 through 17 living in Manassia have tested positive from COVID-19. Our case incidence, it's a seven-day rolling average, is 75.9 cases per 100,000 per day, and that's in the red. We want to get down below a case per day. We know that 32.3 is the positivity rate, our average positivity rate per day, and our goal is less than five. We have been testing a lot. There's 61.6 average number of tests per day, which is where, you know, we want to do more testing, but the positivity rate is high, so we know there's community transmission. Our goal is to get in 28 tests per day. We've got 61.6. This is what helps us, though, to identify, isolate people who have COVID-19, and to also identify their close contacts and quarantine them. And that will help kind of box that disease in. Disease investigators in the last two-week period weren't consistently able to contact all confirmed cases within 24 hours. That puts us in the red. We have been able to reach close contacts of positive cases within 48 hours. The hospitals in the Fox Valley are able to treat all patients, but we are, as you well know from news reports, and we have been talking with our health systems partners that the hospitals are filling up and it's very difficult for them to find capacity for everyone. So they've opened up a field hospital down in Milwaukee, and that's underway for helping them with search capacity. When we're in such a high activity level in Manassia and in this region, we do something called mitigation strategies. That means, what do you do to bring these rates down? The state has given us very specific strategies that correspond with our activity level. So the health officers in our region came together and used these very high mitigation strategies to issue a public health alert. And what we're looking at is making sure that people monitor for symptoms if they've traveled for 14 days. Indoors, consider no gathering outside of your household members. Outdoors, consider limiting outdoor gatherings to 10 or fewer people with physical distancing and face coverings. Indoors, restaurants, consider takeout, curbside pickup, or delivery only, and consider closing indoor bars. Outdoors, consider takeout, curbside, or pickup and delivery, consider closing outdoor bars. Consider not opening salons and spas except for minimum operations. Workplaces should be considering essential workforce onsite only, making sure they're managing their symptoms, physical distancing and face coverings. Grocery stores and pharmacies, no self-service or dine-in if they happen to have that. Retail, you know, we want to make sure people, again, are doing curbside pickup as much as they possibly can to keep your travel to a minimum. Gyms, consider not opening except minimal operations and so forth. So this is what we use to develop an alert with the surrounding health departments, City of Appleton, Calumet County, Manassia, Audagami County, and Whittibeco County. It can be found on our website as well. We were able to do some media relations around the alert, which was very good to get the word out that really people should not be going out except for essential needs and that hospitals are enacting their emergency plans. And we really have to do everything we can to shake off the COVID fatigue and really double down and work at all of the things that we need to do. We know what they are. You know, keeping that physical distance, wearing a cloth face mask, washing your hands, making sure that you don't gather with people outside of your households, limiting your gatherings to 10 people or less, self-monitoring, and if you're symptomatic, get a test, but stay home while you're testing, and cooperate with public health officials if you've tested positive or are in close contact, because that is what will help us to limit the spread of the disease. When we can identify and isolate people, we also isolate the disease. Updates for you. Secretary Andrea Palm, Department of Health Services Secretary, did issue an emergency order. It limits indoor gatherings to 25% of a room or the total occupancy for the building. That is up on our website. We now have implemented COVID testing sites using Wisconsin Army National Guard resources and our Health Department resources. There are now testing sites at Appleton North High School, Sunnyview Expo Center in Oshkosh. There will be a testing site at Christ the Rock Church. It'll be open this Thursday. It'll be open Thursdays through Saturdays. And then there is a site at Data Care in Nina, and it's a little bit different site. It's not with the Army National Guard, but it is very helpful. Remember, please, everyone, protect yourself and others from COVID-19. Stay six feet away from others. Wear a mask and wash your hands. Please help us to limit the spread of the disease and drive down these numbers so that our businesses and our schools can be open and we can interact with society a little bit more freely. I did want to take a moment and mention that we did, as a city, decide that door-to-door trick-or-treating was not advised, but there are other alternative methods of celebrating Halloween that are up on the Health Department website. So that's all I have tonight. If you have any questions.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So your very first slide that you showed, you showed over more than 5,000-plus people being already tested. Is that in the City of Manassia?
Yes. I can add to that slide if you'd like.
Basically, what you're saying is almost 1 in 3 are close to 1 in 3 people have been tested already. To me, that's incredible. I mean, if we have a population of 18,000, you know, you know, probably closer to 1 in 4, but that, to me, that's a, I mean, I've never been tested, so I'm just
We really worked hard. Testing and contact tracing are key to isolating folks that have the disease and are close contacts, so it can't be spread further. And that's the problem when we have difficulty with contact tracing. So yes, we are very pleased that we've had that much testing, but because of the positivity rate, which was very high, as you saw, it tells me we need more testing so that we can identify people who have the disease and box in that disease. We need to drive these rates down. It's really, right now, we're at a point where when you leave your house, you will encounter COVID-19 in one way, shape, or form, which is why we really need people to be mindful of all the strategies when they leave their home to protect themselves and to protect others, and especially those more vulnerable, anybody of any age with underlying health conditions and people over 65. It's really important.
You did tell me that you and I talked on the phone, and you mentioned about trick-or-treating. And how was that information being put out there? You said you were going to be contacting the school district, and are they contacting their students and parents?
Actually, the Police Department put up a notice. Actually, maybe Mayor would like to talk about that, but we did get it out to the school district that posted it on their Facebook page. We also had it posted on the Police Department Facebook page, the Health Department webpage, or Facebook page. And so it's been circulated. So I don't know, Mayor, if you want to say anything about that further?
Like you said, we did send that over to the school district. This is not technically a ban on trick-or-treating. It's just that the city is not endorsing it. We did not set orders for trick-or-treating, and we're recommending that people don't do it. So but we did notify the school district as well as the media.
Okay.
And there are strategies on our website for people to look at, you know, fun things that they can do that don't require the door-to-door trick-or-treating. I'm hearing a lot about, you know, pumpkin carving contests, virtual contests, and watching fun movies with families. So there are other things that people can do this year instead of the face-to-face that could risk transmissibility.
And I did notice that a lot of the library has some programs too virtually for Halloween.
Yes, I saw that also. That's great. Thank you.
Well, I usually get about 80 to 100 kids, so I'm I'm not buying candy this year, so hopefully the communication has been put out there. And I think these stores are going to hurt because they're full of candy right now. And if someone's got a sweet tooth, get ready for it to be on sale.
I bought mine. I'm going to eat it now.
Okay, well, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
I got questions.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, thank you. Nancy, I got three questions.
Sure.
Just a piggyback off of Alderman Sevanik in his numbers that he brought up. That was my first question, is so many people are getting tested. Why?
Well, the testing sites really encourage people who have symptoms of COVID-19 to be tested, or if they've been in contact with somebody who's positive. They're called close contacts. And there are a lot of people, so the reason we are doing a lot of testing is because we have a lot of people with symptoms of COVID, and they want to be sure. And we also do have circulating virus right now. Some people, you know, it may be that they have something else going on. So for example, they might have an allergy and the allergy medications, but I think anybody with symptoms should get tested. We need to take this really seriously.
Okay, so then why would I get tested?
If you have symptoms or if you've been in contact with somebody that has COVID-19, you should be tested so that you can identify whether or not you have the virus and whether or not you should be quarantined or isolated if you have it, you know, if you're testing positive. And that way, then, we can work with you to find out who else might have a close contact with the person that tested positive, so you can, you know, get the disease boxed in and keep it from spreading.
Okay. My third question is, and I read this in the paper, and I didn't know this. So people are carriers of this virus, and they don't even know it, and they're not sick. How, so I noticed, and I know you, my sister-in-law was over here Saturday. She's one of the additional people that you trained, to Sherri O'Connell, to work with you on this. But if I'm a carrier and I have the virus, but I'm not sick, and I'm all in the public, and I'm giving it to other people, how are you going to trace that back to me?
Well, that's why we're asking everyone to wear masks and keep a distance, because it's not that you wear a mask for yourself, you wear it for others as well. So if you have the disease and you're what they call asymptomatic, or you don't have symptoms, then, you know, we want to be able to reduce spread that way. And that's why when we have such widespread disease right now, that people need to take this very seriously, and don't go out except for essential items. Do pickups. You know, we want to support our local businesses through curbside pickups and other things, but really, I don't think it's wise for us to be gathering in person for exactly the reasons you're saying, is that people, when they go out right now, because of the widespread community or widespread transmissibility, that they may encounter the disease, and the people that are carrying it may not notice it. And that's difficulties in schools as well. And that's why, you know, there's been some wise decisions made about doing a virtual school. And I know that's not always a popular decision, but if we would all pull together and do this for a period of time, we could limit this disease and get back to, you know, operations as normal as possible, I guess.
Yeah, so if I may, may carry on. So that's, you know, a huge thing, and why our numbers are going up, Nancy, is maybe partly to a lot that the asymptomatic people are spreading this virus, and it just, it's bringing our numbers way up, and I hear you. We all hear you, and we're all doing our best. I do my best, I, you know, you know, especially being on dialysis, so it's just hard. I mean, like, two weeks ago, Alderman Sevanik and myself brought up to you about every time we're out, and every time I'm out, and I go to the Y because I need to, I need to keep working out, you know, or to stay strong for my kidney transplant. But I'm careful there, and I even wear a mask when I'm on the machine, sweating as I am. I have the mask on. It just, it just
And that's why it's really, it's really important that people around you are also wearing that mask and distancing. And then the gatherings, which you raised, are really important, that people need to not gather with people outside of their family. It's, we've got to, we've got to limit that congregated settings where you have a lot of people in close contact. That's why the health officers recommended gathering in groups of 10 or fewer. And I would say, you know, we really, this is to the point where we really need to think about, you know, don't go outside of your home unless you have to pick up essential items. Consider the curbside pickup, you know, look at every alternative you have that's going to limit your contact with other people outside of your home. And I'm just being straight with all of you. This is really difficult stuff. This is, this is what, this is a pandemic, and it's it's going up in our community right now. It's not going down, and we need to push it down. And the only way we're going to do that is to follow the recommendations consistently.
You know, and I just want to, and I know we all feel the same way, that we thank you for the time you're putting in, how hard you're working. And I wanted to mention that because Saturday coming home, dialysis is in Nina, and so Saturday coming home, I always go through town, and Saturday, you were in your office. And on Sunday, I was out, and I come, I drive through downtown again, and on Sunday, you were in your office. And I can imagine it was just only for an hour or two both days. And so just very appreciative for the amount of work that you are putting in. So, thank you.
And thank you for that. And let me just say that, you know, the city itself has been really working hard. You may see me because I'm in sort of a bubble on the corner here. But you have a lot of very dedicated folks, and my staff, you know, I want to make sure that I recognize them too. But throughout the city, you have really good folks working with you. And I want to thank you guys for, you know, really listening and doing things like the virtual meeting options. This is what it's going to take. It's unfortunate, but look at how good you've gotten at it. It's a new skill. Maybe we didn't want to have to develop, but I think these are the types of measures that we're going to have to take, not just for the very new future. I think we're going to have to be flexible and think about this for quite some time. So tell me, get a vaccine anyway. But thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your attention.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for you, Mayor. Last time we met, two weeks ago, we talked briefly about all committee meetings going virtual, just as the Common Council has gone virtual, because there are, there were at that point still some committee meetings happening in person. And given that the recommendation is for people not to gather, my question is, have you given that some more thought?
We will meet virtually if it's practical to do that. There are, as I said, some committees that are not practical, that we're allowing people to call in if they feel that they need to do that, but we probably still will have some in-person as well.
Can you give an example of the ones you feel are
Especially planned commission. It's very hard to discuss drawings when you're not in person.
And we look at many of those same things in our council packet every two weeks. And so I just find it very contradictory that we, as the city, would not follow the recommendations and would continue to encourage people to gather.
Alderman Sevanik?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Nichols. I think all our meetings should be virtual at this point, especially when we're at a very high level. should be virtual at this point, especially when we're at a very high level, not a sort of level or
If we want in the community, we have to have some in-person meetings. And it's just imperative that we do such. If we do not want to get things done and want to pause everything for the next few months, we can definitely do that, but.
Mayor, I totally disagree with that. The city council meeting is more in-depth and technical than any of the other committees because we are handling all of them. We are dealing with all of it. So, uh, I hope my colleagues will agree with me. I believe that all meetings should be virtual at this point until, uh, Nancy feels it's safe enough or before, or until we get away from that very high level that we're all at right now.
Duly noted. Alderman Taylor.
I agree with both Aldermen on this issue too. Nancy has just given us a very dire report and it's going to be a while before the vaccine is here. And, uh, we're at this extreme rating right now and we need to, uh, we can do this online. And, uh, I know we can accomplish it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the report to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Severnick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through E and Communications F through M.
Sir, a second.
Second, Alderman Tom Grady.
Any discussion?
I have one, Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, let's go to the agenda here. Sorry Ted, if I jumped in.
No, no, you're council president, you, you rule.
The item G, the, uh, can, can we just get another, I know we did obviously that that's our minutes here, but kind of for the public too. Can we get a little update here on the BRIN? There was kind of a strong opinion that there'd be some activity by now out there. And I have been reassuring people because I have been in communication with Sam. Uh, things are moving forward, but if Sam or yourself could address that a little, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Director Schrader, do you have a comment for us?
Yeah, I certainly can. Uh, again, we, we felt the same way. Uh, we certainly understand, uh, you know, from a visual standpoint, the, the site is, is very clear in our downtown and, uh, it's going to be very open and, uh, you know, so that's why, uh, staff did talk to, uh, the group and we asked for a little bit of update to provide into the council packet uh, today. Um, in addition to that, uh, let's see if he's still on, uh, Kip Golden with, uh, CR Structures. Uh, he, so he is the general manager. He is also on tonight, um, and can certainly provide a little bit more, uh, probably than I can. Uh, but we are just, uh, working through some final things, um, with the group, uh, COVID certainly, um, I know we're probably all sick of hearing it, but it certainly is causing a few little delays. Uh, but we still are, uh, while while demolition of the buildings likely will not happen, uh, starting tomorrow, uh, as the amendment initially noted, uh, we likely, uh, are still pushing very strongly to have this project, um, started by the end of the year. So again, uh, there was some cushion in there that, that we wanted because we, we certainly want to start seeing, uh, the start of construction by the end of the year. So, uh, Kip, why don't you, uh, provide a little bit more of an update, um, with everything that you guys have been doing to date, uh, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we're, uh, we are pushing through. Um, certainly the, uh, again, this pandemic hasn't been nice to anybody this year, but, uh, we are working with a local bank. They're excited for the project. They understand that it's going to take us a year to, to get this done and uh, hopefully by then we're, we are through this thing. Uh, but, uh, we are gearing up, uh, it, uh, everything is still in line for us to start this project yet this year and get footings and foundations started. So, um, we will more than likely be, uh, I, I know the, the prior development was had a, um, was demoing the building a month before we were starting. Uh, we'll be demoing the building as part of us starting. So we can start digging for footings and foundations at the same time we're, uh, we're doing some demos. So, uh, that allows our site work contractor to be on site. Um, and so again, everything's on track. Uh, should be closing on our loan here shortly and, uh, and you'll see some more stuff out there. The job sign should be going up this week, uh, with the rendering of the project. Uh, so, I mean, I guess that's something at this point, but certainly more to follow here shortly.
Do you have anything else, Sam?
Uh, no, sorry, my mic was on. I was just going to ask Dan if, uh, our Alderman Severnick, if that answered, uh, I guess a little bit of what you're looking.
Well, obviously Sam, I, I read what was in the packet. It's just that if there are people watching this, that yeah, I've received at least a half a dozen calls, even one from an Alderman wondering if the project is still on. And I guaranteed him that from all the information you have given me that it is moving forward. So thank you.
We will get it done.
Thank you, Kip. Alderman Nichols.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, items I and J have to do with the railroad crossings at Racine Street and DePere Street, or I'm sorry, Appleton and DePere. One of them is a proposed final decision. The other is a final decision. So and it's a lot of pages to read for the public and to decipher. So if either yourself or Director Alex could uh, summarize what will be happening and also differentiate between a final decision and a, what a proposed final decision is.
I can, this is, uh, Adam. What you see there is, uh, obviously the proposed final is in regards to the crossing of the Appleton Street. Uh, crossing the railroad's crossing at Appleton Street. Uh, it is proposed to, to give us and the public an opportunity to, um, share written comments. Uh, I'm not sure as to whether or not that will affect their decision. Um, but perhaps if there were, uh, enough people, um, uh, against it, um, perhaps it would. Um, so that's my understanding of the proposed, uh, the final one would be the rough crossings. Um, seeing, um, the cross or the closing of the crossing was, uh, uh, granted, obviously that crossing has been removed from the rough crossing. The Pier Street they did earlier in the year and now, uh, Racine Street needs to be, uh, repaired, brought up to standards. Um, they have until April 21st to do that. Um, because, uh, they need to get that done before they can close the Appleton Street Crossing. Um, they, as you folks, I'm sure have seen, there is, uh, some, uh, message boards out there indicating that they're going to try and get the Apple or Racine Street done this fall. Um, and they do have intentions of, well, going right over to Appleton Street. Um, and look to close that yet this fall. Uh, we have reached out to the OCR and to the railroad, uh, requesting that we have a little additional time to, uh, uh, plan this and provide access to, uh, um, the, um, the closure that's going to take place on Appleton Street. So that's sort of where we're at. As far as, uh, costs go, um, we are responsible for putting up the guardrail and the road closed signage at that closing. The railroad is responsible for, uh, any costs for creating a turnaround. Um, and more or less the order indicated not a cul-de-sac, but, uh, either a Y or a T or an I turnaround, which is something, um, we'll need to take a closer look at work with, uh, the industry there and try and determine what is, uh, most appropriate. And that is also another reason why that we've requested for some additional time here.
Thank you for that. So if I'm understanding correctly, uh, one, there really has been a final decision made about Appleton Street?
No, there has not. Um, on Appleton Street, however, uh, there is a final decision on the rough crossing, meaning that they agreed with us that it is a rough crossing and, and is in need of repair. Um, so that, that is why, uh, that has to happen before anything else can happen, uh, per the order uh, for the Appleton Street closing order. Uh, so that is final and that's, uh, what they plan to tackle here, uh, next week. And then like I said, uh, uh, they have every intention of heading over to Appleton Street and closing that off, so.
So if people, uh, have a strong feeling one way or another about Appleton Street, they could uh, weigh in through public comment still?
Correct. Um, there is a um, a means for the public to chime in. Um, yeah, any other person shall file comments at the office's website at, uh, on, online through the public comments section. Uh, we, uh, any parties to this, uh, this docket or this, this complaint would need to go through the ERS system, but the general public can, uh, provide comments.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just, uh, wanted to, um, give my two cents that, um, I was at that, uh, uh, meeting, uh, hearing. Um, it was very, very interesting to to listen to, uh, the attorney and this gal, uh, from Madison. Um, the questions, uh, that our attorney asked and, 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 and I'll, I'll just come right on and say that, that that lady could not answer them. I was surprised. It's like, really? So, um, at, at lunchtime, I didn't speak during it, um, but I did speak with the administrative law judge, uh, David Albino uh, at lunch for about 15 minutes and he gave me the time. And I was very, very honored with that. I said, I said to him afterwards, um, and I gave, you know, our city's reason why we didn't, did not want that closed and and, and, and the big huge factor is when that gets closed, it will never, ever, ever open again. So, um, but I just wanted to chime in and it was neat to be at that hearing and to talk with the administrative law judge. I was hoping that, you know, maybe an Alderman being there talking to him, but, uh, he was the one, you know, that makes the decision and, um, so or, all righty, thank you.
So, so the city had two arguments. One was to provide better emergency access to the plant there. And now we'll only have access from one side if there's no crossing there. And if that would be blocked, it could hinder ambulance or fire department access to that plant. And the second was to provide better pedestrian and bike access throughout the community. And that one was demonstrated this weekend that that's apparently not a huge concern to the railroad who plopped their sign completely blocking the sidewalk over the weekend. So I did send the Commissioner of Railroads a photo of that and told them this is exactly why we should not close that crossing. Because we do need more multiple different access points for pedestrians, especially when, um, the railroad is so um, laissez-faire about making sure that those pedestrian points are open and not pushing people out into the street. So I did get a comment this morning that she did um, forward that on to the Office of the Commissioner and I believe that the sign has been placed off of the sidewalk now as well. Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking under Communications, uh, item K, retirement announcement of Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Vernon Green. He's done a great job for the community. And, um, I, I'm looking ahead and looking back at the same time, uh, Alderman Severnick and I were on the council when that merger took place. And it was always said that it was a model and we were going to, we didn't want anybody to lose jobs at the time. So the model was going to evolve. And then as people retired, there could be some changes made. And I'm just wondering if the, uh, the Fire Commission, the Fire Commission is looking at this, uh, possibly, uh, merging this job with other jobs and, and putting different responsibilities on different people to, uh, help save the community money. And, uh, I, I, I hope that the Fire Commission takes up that, uh, that consideration at the next meeting. And, uh, because as I said, uh, this was a model and, uh, uh, Chief Len at the time, who went over to Appleton as a chief, uh, said it could always, as it evolves, we can make changes. So, uh, I would hope that, uh, Fire Commission, uh, looks into that. Thank you.
So Alderman Taylor, if you want to see that happen, I would contact the Chair of the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee and ask them to place that on the agenda. And then go to that meeting as well so that you could bring your point up as well.
Well, I would hope all jobs, all jobs in our city that we looked at, uh, the possibility of, uh, of combining those jobs. Uh, the last 20 years where I worked, I saw it happen. People said, no, no, you can't do that. You can't do this. Well, it happened and, and, and it works. So.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing for or against.
Oh, no, no, there, I'm just saying, I'm just saying to the council here, that's what corporate America does every day out there. And I seen it firsthand for the last 20 years and, uh, it can't be done. Thank you.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll go back with James Taylor on this, uh, number K. To go back, I know Alderman Severnick and Alderman Repella are on the Fire Commission Joint Finance Committee with me. And, and I would like to have Police Chief Kevin give a little kudos to, um, Marshal Vernon Green. Uh, because I think he's, he's deserving of some type of recognition here on, on, online.
Fire Chief. You said Police Chief.
Sorry, Fire Chief.
Chief Clark.
Yes, I will, uh, I will send that over to Chief Green, uh, tomorrow. Thank you.
Alderman Repella. Oh, okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I do not see any opposed or opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Item G is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a public comment this evening?
Hello, Sandy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'll try to make this quick. The first thing I'd like to, um, emphasize is repeating the comments made by a few of the Aldermen regarding the virtual meetings. Um, I know the mayor is not in favor of having all the, all meetings and committee meetings meet virtually. I would think that in, in past practice, uh, paper packets were made available. I would think that that could be supplied to any member of any committee to also have a paper option. Just going virtually doesn't mean you have to eliminate all paper. So drawing, site plans, those things can easily be accommodated by anyone requesting them. Um, I think it would only be fair to all those committee members to have that option. Okay. Secondly, I did want to comment on the last meeting regarding the stormwater utility rate increase. Um, I believe it was increased by 15%. I wanted to, I did a little backtracking and located a memo dated from March 1st, 2018, from former Public Works Director Josh Randowski regarding the stormwater action plan. That was a plan that set out uh, what the goals would be for the next 25 years. In that memo, it, it recommended that the plan recommends that the stormwater fee be adjusted by 7.5% every five years starting in 2020. Now, we went to 15% because we've got it over doubled the rate. Um, I questioned that rate increase at the last meeting and I'm really questioning it now because that recommendation of 7.5% every five years made it sustainable for the next 25 years. So somebody's math is off and I'd like the Public Works Department to reconsider, uh, what they're asking for. Um, speaking of public works, um, the public works agenda tonight is a recommendation for the city Um, speaking of public works, um, the public works agenda tonight is a recommendation for the city to retain ownership of three interceptor sewers from the Nina Minasha wastewater treatment facility. My question is why? What the cost is? There's no cost laid out. What the benefit is to the city? What the benefit is to the Sewerage Commission? What additional staffing would be required? How old are those pipes? How much? What are we looking for in the future? Why is this being initiated other than the fact that Fox Trotz and the Nina does it, so we want to do it too? It's just a lot of questions and I would appreciate someone asking those questions for me. The next thing is there's an update on the tips throughout the city. My major question is, it seems to be with a lot of these tips have evolved to the point where instead of creating a tip to create a development and have it paid back to the community as quickly as possible, we are extending these tips to be able to siphon off funds and use for other projects. A perfect example is the current, um, the current plan reads differently than the plan that was published in 2017. For example, tip eight, and with just that, with the disposition of eighty-seven Reseding Street and new development on the horizon, this tip should, in the future, project to flow with a positive fund balance. Now it talks about using funds from that increment to develop other projects, other things in the area, new development, and not paying it off. So where, obviously, the vision changed. Obviously, the intent of the tip has changed and I'm concerned about that, that we're not paying these off as soon as possible, um, that we're trying to get as much out of them as we can and the taxpayers footing the bill. I wanted to just touch base quickly with the check register. I know that a lot of items are listed as COVID expenses. And my question is, is the city guaranteed to receive those funds from the government to replenish what we have expended or is that just a hope for? Um, I added up just the expenses related to council laptops, department head laptops, COVID tracking laptops, the software involved. It's ninety-four hundred dollars, almost ten thousand dollars. That's not just the little things. Um, so I'm wondering, affecting the budget, if we're actually going to recoup those costs. Also in the check register is an amount for televising the council meeting. Uh, it's not much, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. It's dated October. None of those meetings for September were ever televised. So I'm questioning what this check is for. Also in the check register is the bench for the Blue Jay downtown for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Granted, it's a cool little Blue Jay. A lot of people are enjoying it. But what, what budget is that coming out of? Because obviously it was never budgeted last year. And speaking of the budget, and I'll just end with that, how soon before the public can review the budget for the coming year? We seem to be the smallest community, the smallest population, the smallest budget, and we're always the last to have it, um, published. Appleton already has it out there. Nina has theirs out there and we always seem to trail them out. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are six items this evening. Does anyone wish to have any of them separated?
Mayor? My mouse is, sorry, my mouse wasn't working. Uh, just for Sandra, a lot of those I called in about today, exactly some of the same questions you asked. They will be addressed if you stay tuned. Uh, anyways, so Mayor, the consent agenda, I'd like to hold all the Board of Public Works items, which are two, three, four, and why not five?
Five. So someone else wishes to have five separated?
I did say five.
Oh, you did? You want five? Okay.
Yeah, might as well.
It's up to you. So do we have any others that people would like separated? No? You want to make a motion?
Sure. Mayor, with that, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the common council of ten, five, twenty, and the Nina Minash Fire Rescue Joint and Personnel recommendations of the joint power agreement with Winnebago County and the City of Minasha.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
We have a motion for item two.
One minute, please. Could we have the agenda up on the screen? All I have are people's faces.
I have been requested that we have people's faces on the screen rather than the agenda by the council president last week. So that's why I left it up this way.
Yeah, I agree. Well, for now, maybe we should have it up. But what I've been doing is I've been flipping back and forth. So I brought up the agenda. It's on the background so that, um, you, that little new icon that Microsoft has, if you click that, your agenda will be there and then you can, you know, look at the agenda. And then if you need to go back to the, you know, go to meeting, you hit that little icon. So I've been flipping back and forth.
I forgot. But I've got the agenda on my telephone because I got a problem with the computer. So I would like the agenda up too. I think it should be a council vote.
We can do either one.
Do whatever. I just tell Tom how easy it is to be able to, be able to see that agenda.
So when this, when this records, it either records all of our pictures up like this or it records just the agenda. And that was the, I, I don't care either way. Do either way. But I can't do both.
I use my computer. I got the agenda up on my, on my computer. So.
You can do it on your same laptop. Just flip back and forth.
What's the pleasure of the?
I don't care however. If you want to bring it up, fine. I mean, if he doesn't have it right now, let's do it that way. Might be easier for, but be prepared for, you know, the next meeting. Either print one out or have one printed for you and delivered.
You can use your, 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 your other computer. You get the email on there from the city.
This is my computer.
I, I'm pulling it up.
What I'm saying is you can keep more than one window open.
I'll come.
He's got a laptop.
Okay.
Tom, Tom didn't get a laptop.
We didn't want him to have one.
I have a laptop, but that's the only computer I have.
Oh, okay.
Multiple windows.
Got everybody's picture up.
Yeah, but what the mayor is saying is that what, when this is being recorded, now all you're going to see is the agenda and not the people.
Oh. Oh, they won't show that little two inches up there?
Nope.
So I did put up the agenda then.
Well, the people are gonna go on.
Take, take the agenda. Let's go.
Okay. All right. So, uh, number two, um, is, uh, the, uh, to accept the payment to MCC Inc., contract unit number twenty nineteen dash zero four for the new street construction and reconstruction for the various locations in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Two hundred and, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, ninety-one cents. That is payment number four. Uh, do I have a motion to accept that? Alderman Taylor?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Taylor. Uh, Clerk Doc.
You're not running the meeting. You're just making a motion. Right?
So there's a motion and a second for item number two, which is the payment to MCC?
Yeah.
Is there, is there any discussion?
Alderman Savick.
No, no, Mark, you're not running the meeting. This isn't the Board of Public Works right now. This is just your vote. We're on the common council. You're making a motion and Alderman Taylor seconded. Okay. Mayor, you can also flip back and forth to the pictures and the agenda.
I'm not quite sure how to go back and forth, so it's going to show up. I just had a hard enough time getting the pictures up so I could see whose mic was on. So Alderman Taylor, you have discussion?
No, I was just seconding it.
Okay. No discussion then? Okay, seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item three, the change orders for the PWF facility?
Yes, I would like to accept the change orders for Myron Construction Company, Inc. for the Public Works Facility Construction Project. That's an addition of five thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Change order number thirteen.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? No one has any discussion? No? Okay, seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item number four is a payment to Myron Construction. Do we have a motion?
I would like to make the motion to accept the payment for Myron Construction Company, Inc. for the Public Works Facility Construction Project in the amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, fifty-nine cents. Payment number seven.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Grady? Do you have discussion?
No, I just. Sorry.
Does anyone have discussion? Just wanted to make sure since we separated it. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item five is the recycling.
I'd like to make one, one comment that the front office building on the Public Works is looking very slick. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yes, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. Okay. Um, yes, I'd like to make the motion to accept the revising the city's additional recycling cart policy to offer to our residents the ability to purchase at cost an additional recycling cart from the Public Works Facility to be used for the collection of a single stream curbside recyclables.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Savick?
I noticed in the accounts payable and payroll, we reimbursed someone for taking a smaller cart. That could have been garbage, but, um, is that something we do? I thought if they decide to get a different cart, we don't give them some kind of credit or whatever. Or, or were they given the wrong one and then we just reimbursed them or something?
If, if I may, uh, what that is, is that if you go, sixty-four gallons is the standard cart size for garbage for refuse. Uh, if a resident requests a ninety-six gallon cart, uh, there is a fee. It's over a hundred dollars. Now, I don't have it right in front of me, uh, for that additional volume. Uh, so generally what happens if there's ownership change, uh, the new family comes in, they'll request, uh, uh, just the sixty-four gallon cart. And then at that point in time, we do reimburse, uh, you know, the person who is exchanging it for a smaller cart. Cause that, that, yeah.
Yep, thank you. Makes sense. Okay.
Other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for October 2nd through 15th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 2nd through October 15th in the amount of five hundred, four thousand, five hundred, seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Is there discussion?
Mayor?
Alderman Savick?
Thank you. Um, I called in today to Jennifer and found a couple of things that I might like for Jennifer to address those. And a few of them might help also when, um, Mrs. Taylor had some questions and some of those might help out.
Um, first, I just wanted to mention that the amount that you guys are approving tonight is correct. However, you may have noticed that the check register for October 1st was included in error. That was part of last, um, meeting, but the amount is still correct. One of the things that was brought up with the, um, purchases, um, that are marked COVID, the city is guaranteed those funds, um, and will submit for those, um, within the next couple of weeks.
Also too, uh, this Taylor had a dollar amount and I think that dollar amount might be smaller because I, you want to address the council laptops, I meant, Jennifer?
Right, so the, um, check register for ten, one, that was really part of last, um, meeting, was included in this packet in error. Um, so that charge looks like it showed up twice.
Right. Okay.
So there was a question about the Blue Jay bench. The Blue Jay bench was a donation that was donated specifically, the money was donated specifically to the city to purchase that. And then we provided, we cut the check back to the company that produced it. So there was no city funds involved in that project as well. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators licenses. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated October 19th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Anne Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with the City of Manasha and TJ's Capital Holdings.
We skipped number three.
Oops, I'm sorry, I crossed it off. Item three is release of restriction for the thirty-three foot private road easement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the release of the thirty-three foot private road easement affecting lots one twenty-three, one twenty-four, one twenty-five, and one twenty-six of the second addition to the Southfield plot.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion is second by Alderman Langdon. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have discussion.
Sure.
Um, and I guess my discussion will be with Sam. Um, sorry, I, I did talk to you on the phone today. I forgot to ask you about this. Um, can you explain, I, I do understand it's trying to clean up the title of the property and everything, but could you explain, um, why this is being done? And then again, if, if we are handing over property, why there isn't some type of, uh, expense? Or cost involved?
Certainly. Uh, so again, this is not, uh, a public, uh, road. Uh, so this is not, the city does not have any ownership into this. Uh, what this is, is an actual private, uh, road easement. It followed in, uh, an old driveway that was present back in the nineteen seventies. Um, so this, this easement has just been carried forward as plaques have been recorded, um, and things of that nature. But the original intent for it was for highway purposes. Now that there's other alternatives to, to this area, um, it, it really is not needed. Uh, so again, it, it is their property. It's a private road easement. And why this is coming forward to the common council, um, is because once it is recorded on a plat, it is the governmental bodies, uh, authority to, to release this item. So again, they, they could not just, um, record an affidavit to, to remove it saying it's not needed because it was recorded on an official plat. Now, the city government does have to release that officially off our plaques.
Okay, am I still on? Yes. So, um, I don't understand. Okay, then if we look at that map and then there's still areas below that yet, that's still unplanted land? And then there's this, a- am I looking at that right?
Yep, so basically where, uh, where Nature's Way and Tracy Street, uh, intersect, that would be, uh, to the west of this. There's a sixty-six foot private road easement that follows the entire length of, of these subdivisions from, again, from the edge of Nature's Way all the way to the, uh, west side of the Appleton Water Plant. Uh, so again, thirty-three feet of that is located on the south half of the private properties. And thirty-three feet is located on the north side of the conservancy. So again, the unplanted lands is the Manasha Conservancy. Um, and then again, that, that private easement does continue all the way to Nature's Way. Uh, because of the, the timing, uh, we did not have, uh, time to, to reach out to all those private, uh, entities to see about releasing the entire thing. It is very possible in the future that we see a very similar, uh, re- request to release this for, for the adjoining properties all the way out to Nature's Way.
All right, thank you, Sam.
Sam, is that where the trail currently is or not?
So the trail and all the, uh, utilities are located south of the private, uh, properties. Uh, so again, they would be located in the thirty-three feet of, uh, that's located on the conservancy side. Um, so again, on the north side of the conservancy, but south of the private properties. They are not located on the private properties.
So that yellow part is the private property?
That is, that is correct. So the bold line on the, on the bottom of the, the yellow there, that is, that is the south line of those private property, um, that, of those properties. And the trail was actually south of that further.
Okay, ten-four. Thank you. So we do have a motion at this point. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Nopala?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Becky, you did, you had your mic off when you spoke, I think.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye. By the way, Becky, your vote came in real light, so you might have some mic issues.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, now we'll move on to item four, the First Amendment. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Manasha and T and J's Capital Holding LLC, Bertram Dental.
Second.
There's a motion is second by Alderman Ted Gotti. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Uh, Sam, last meeting, uh, we had some discussion on the landscaping and I was just wondering, uh, I didn't see any correspondence on that, so I was wondering.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we did, uh, reach out to the property owner. We did do a site inspection. Um, it was noted that the existing landscaping, while I think it was noted at the last meeting, it looks great. Uh, it does not, uh, meet our current, uh, city ordinance, um, or what was previously approved as part of the site plan. So again, that was noted as a condition as part of the plant commission. Uh, so we did reach out to the developer here, uh, or the business owner, um, and we did add that under item three. Uh, so by June first of twenty twenty-one, uh, the site, uh, shall be brought into compliance with the city ordinance for, for the landscaping. So again, between now through the winter, we will work with them to, uh, to develop that landscape plan to, to replant anything that, that needs to, uh, be planted for, uh, meeting the city ordinance. Again, they, they stated a lot of the stuff, it was, it was just dead, uh, so they had took it out and, uh, attempted to clean it up and, um, was just a bit of an oversight. So again, we will work with them through the winter, uh, to hopefully have that, uh, installed on every four, June first of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, well, the, the landscape they put in is nice, but, uh, on the outer reaches of it, uh, they took out the other landscaping and just planted grass. So I think, uh, it could have been an oversight there and I appreciate it and I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate it. And I appreciate the council last meeting, uh, letting us to have this discussion and make sure that, uh, it met, uh, the, the requirements from what the planning commission approved for the site plan. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Nopala?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye, and you're welcome.
Eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. We have one resolution, resolution thirty-three. Do we have a motion?
Mark, it has your name on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alderman Langdon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, the, uh, I'd like, uh, to make the motion to approve our thirty-three dash twenty, it's a resolution pertaining to the equivalent runoff unit, uh, slash, um, shortened of it is, uh, ERU. And that's the charges for the stormwater utility. And, um, it, that is introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon. And, uh, it was approved by the common council on ten, five twenty. Um, and we needed to have this in resolution form. That's why it is on here. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion is second. Any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, the, the stormwater, uh, I, I certainly someday would like to see this broke down to individual properties and taxed accordingly. And other cities have done that. And also too, by doing that, it would help the situation that Alderman Savannick's been working on with the fire department when it comes to the percentage that we pay for. So I, I think it's important, uh, thing to, to break this down. I know other Aldermen in the past have, uh, talked about this. And I think it's something that, that we should be looking at, especially, uh, with all the different, uh, uh, county, uh, 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 maps that we have now and, and, and the aerial maps we have now. And, uh, I, I think it's something that, uh, we should move, move that up a little sometime to, uh, uh, to, uh, assess the properties accordingly. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon, did you have something else?
Yeah, um, to, uh, ask Alderman Taylor, like, okay, so we are approving this, uh, ERU uh, percentage and, uh, the resolution. So when would you be looking at changing it to, uh, taxing the, um, uh, constituents?
I, I think what Alderman Taylor is asking for is to do an actual measurement of the impervious surface on each property and calculating a separate fee for each property based upon that impervious surface, much like we do with the commercial properties. Is that what you're asking, James?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
And that would have to come in the future at some point.
Right.
Alderman Savannick?
I think also too, and I don't want to put words in James's mouth, but what, I think what he's trying to say is that we probably have better technology today to start doing these things. It's just that we haven't put the time into doing it. And we're just doing it the simple way and some, some folks might be paying more than others and others are getting a deal. So I think, uh, to do what he's saying, we could, uh, this could be more fair for everybody in the community. But it takes a lot of work.
So. It does. It does. And that's what, that's what I mentioned about, uh, uh, the technology now is moved, it moved up. And, uh, the county has just upgraded their wings program too. So, uh, this, uh, this, uh, it's something we should be looking at and, uh, thank you.
So we could be Alderman Taylor and Stan, we could be actually doing this, uh, uh, next year then, um, already?
I think really the, the person to address that would either be Corey or Adam. Um, and what time, timeframes they have, if they feel that's something they can do. And it's also something that would have to probably be budgeted because it's, um, yes, it might be easier today to do, but it still takes a lot of work, just like doing in a, an assessment. You know, when you have more than six thousand properties that do, I don't think people realize what six thousand is. It's a big number. It's a lot of work that has to go into something like this. But it would be fair, like James is saying, to smaller properties compared to bigger properties than that.
Okay, thanks for, um, uh, explaining. Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
I was just gonna add to that, that it's a very laborious. And I know because we attempted to do it when I was on the board in the town of Clayton. Even with technology, James, it's still very, very difficult to get accurate measurements from satellite pictures. Um, you really almost have to go out and measure a lot of these places. And then the other thing you kind of run into is you do it, you know, as you find the time. Like I say, you got to dedicate somebody to do this. It takes a lot of time. You have to check everything over. Then what ends up happening is somebody changes their driveway, someone does an addition, you know, whatever. Then there have to be flags put in place for how do you know where they assessed properly at that time? And then where do you need to add it? So there's a lot more that goes into it than just an overhead shot from a satellite. Um, it would be great if it would be very easy to do, but it's a lot more difficult when it comes to residential properties. It's a lot easier for commercial than it is residential, so.
I was gonna say, Mayor, I saw Corey's mic on, but then it went off, so. I don't think he wants to address.
You know, Mayor, uh, that's just one element of it. It's, uh, uh, as, uh, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Savannick said, it, it's, uh, it is a very laborious type of process, but it's fair taxation then too. And it also will help us with our percentage for, uh, between Manash and Enop as far as determining, um, our, our percentage for the, for the, for the combined fire department percentage. And, uh, I just think it's, uh, something, I'm not asking for it now, but I think it's something we should be looking forward in the future. And that, of course, if somebody does put an addition on their house, there'd be some, uh, different paperwork that would, uh, uh, with that process of the permits and things that would trigger that, uh, uh, different, uh, taxing on that property because of, uh, uh, of, uh, of a putting on a, a hard surface. Thank you.
Alderman Gotti?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I was gonna also chime in and ask Deputy Corey, what is his thoughts were on this?
Thank you. Um, I think I understand where Alderman Taylor is coming from, uh, fair taxation. Uh, but this is a very, very, uh, time-consuming, um, project, um, similar to what Alderman Schmidt mentioned. Uh, the technology is there and things are better, but, uh, all it takes is a tree. You don't see a patio, um, you know, a deck. Uh, I understand people are supposed to get permits for decks and, uh, you know, additions are probably something that someone's gonna get a permit more for. But there's decks built every day without permits. Uh, there's driveways put in every day without permits. Uh, for every driveway that, uh, one of you older people bring to our attention, there's one or two that are probably put in that we have no clue about. Um, so there, there's things of that nature. Um, and the other thing is, is it just, it wouldn't be, if we did it this year, this is something that you would have to do probably every five years, go back through every parcel in the city and re-up all of that stuff. Um, again, commercial properties are much, much easier. Uh, we do verify commercial properties. Um, we, we do add commercial properties and we change their ERUs, um, when developments happen, um, or additions or parking lots and things of that nature. That stuff goes on. So, uh, it is much easier with commercial properties. Things are typically larger. We do still end up going out and verifying, uh, with the GPS and things of that nature from time to time. But to do every single property, um, I don't want to say it's impossible, but it's, it's borderline saying that without additional staff time or staff to be able to do that.
You know, it's something that we would probably farm out and have, uh, outside company, like when we do the citywide assessments and things. But it's a, it's, it's a fair process and other communities have done it. And, uh, I just think, uh, that, uh, there's some merit there along with, uh, the formula for the, for the, uh, uh, Manash and Enop fire percentage. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor, do you know which communities have done it? I'd be curious to see what it costs per parcel and we could bring that back to you then. But you didn't turn your mic back on though, James?
I was getting your head shake.
Oh, do you know which communities have done it?
Uh, there are communities out there that have done this and, uh, it'd be an exploratory thing that we'd have to look at and, and, uh, see if there's, uh, companies that do this or if it's, uh, if we do it with, uh, uh, or when we do citywide assessments and things, so.
I was just curious if you had specific examples, so we didn't have to go looking for them. So it sounds like you don't.
I'll put that, yeah, I'll, 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 I'll share that with you. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Nopala?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-one.
And is public comments? And is public comments? Sir, anyone, no, I don't know how to go back to the other screen here. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Hello, I'm here. Sandra Del Taylor, if I could. Um, just to. Make a few comments regarding the, the discussion that just took place regarding this stormwater utility fee. I know from past councils, uh. A lot of discussion had been taken regarding doing what Alderman Taylor had suggested. And each time it has been basically struck down due to the amount of labor, labor intensive. And it still isn't fair because no matter what you do, uh, a small lot could be built up more than a large lot. Um, so it wasn't cost productive. Doing all the work, the, the analysis was that the city would actually be losing funds. On the other hand, one thing that could be considered, um, you were asking about other communities I just happen to have. Um, the city of Nina. What they have done is for, for parcels less than 1,700 square feet. They charge a half of a ERU rather than full one. And then those between 1,700 and 4,600, they get the full charge of an ERU. And then more than 4,600 are charged to ERUs. That's just for residential. So you may want to go something like that though, but I do want to caution you that. If you start charging more ERUs for a single residential parcel. Those residents may start asking for credits or it's, uh. Water gardens, stormwater utility, things that they have installed themselves. So. You could be defeating the purpose of that. So. While it's an admirable thing, I know a lot of talk has gone like with the trailer parks and most places that have a. A very small square footage being charged a full ERU, um. In the long run, it has typically been shut down because, uh, the cost benefits didn't outweigh the expense for doing this. So that was just my perception. Um, but it is something to look at. Um. My other question was going back to the check register. I wanted to thank Alderman Sevenix and, uh. Jennifer for answering some of my questions. The one thing that I forgot to ask about was both this check register and the previous one. From October fifth had amounts for the hotel study. And I'm asking if Stan could in a future packet give a synopsis of what that hotel study. Came up with or if, uh, the council could be provided a report on that. So, thank you very much. That's it.
At this point, if someone. Wishes to make a motion to recess to the committees, Alderman Sevenix?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion that we recess into committees and take five minutes for anyone that needs one.
So seven forty-one?
Seven forty-one.
Okay.
I second Stan's motion.
Do you have all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I don't see anyone opposed. We'll come back in about five minutes.
Two of us voted.
Aye.
Okay. I guess the meeting, this is still being recorded, you guys. I see recording is going on.
Randy, you feeling better?
Feeling better. I was gonna ask Mark about what's the airspeed?
You were asking who?
Mark, what, what the airspeed is? He's a pilot.
Oh. He looks like a disc jockey. I think he looks like a disc jockey.
Yeah, Wolfman Jack.
Yeah, he's on mute. Call him Dr. L. Do a little rap, little rapping for us.
Mark, you're on mute.
You, you guys do realize all this stuff records, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I wasn't even listening, so I don't know what you were talking about, but.
Uh, we were all talking about you, Don.
Just you.
Have had it.
Talking about Dr. L here spinning the discs.
Uh, um, um, my, my nick, new nickname's Dr. Elf. I like it, James. I like it.
Seven forty-three now.
You gotta get a big gold chain, Mark.
I got a little, I got a little, little one. And that doesn't cut it.
Is everyone back? One, two, three?
We're waiting for Ted.
Okay, there's Ted. Okay, Becky, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Administration Committee Meeting to Order. Clerk Crowe Kramer, could we have the roll, please?
Uh-oh.
She's not back.
Clerk Crowe Kramer? Could, could we have the roll, please?
I'm on now. Alderman Schmidt?
I'm here.
Alderman Tom Grady? Alderman Tom Grady? Alderman Ted Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenix?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. The first item of business this evening is to approve the Administration Committee Meeting Minutes from August seventeenth, 2020. Is there a motion? Alderman Repella?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from meeting, uh, from the meeting that Alderman Nichols mentioned.
From August. And we have a second from Alderman Ted Grady? Any discussion? Seeing none, all, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ossinay? Minutes are approved. We have one action item this evening and that is the. Municipal Property Insurance Policy Renewal. From Impact and Attorney Captain, would you like to briefly review this, please?
Yes, we received the. Declaration and the renewal policy quote for 2021. In the amount of $44,927. Um, each year when we receive this. We do send out, uh, the list of all of our property to department heads to ask for any adjustments. And, um, that was done this year. We did remove. The, um. Uh, Public Works Facility because the main building has been demolished and there, um. The property insurance on it currently is through builder's risk. And I have had discussions then with the insurance company. Um, to just. Um, because the new building won't be fully completed until we're shortly into 2021. There'll be, uh, just a little bit of a discount, obviously, and then, um. As soon as the building is. Operational and, and we're using it again or using the new building. Uh, then there'll be an adjustment that is made, but it is expected to be close to. This particular premium.
And what is the change from last year, Attorney Captain? The, in the amount, the premium?
Um, let me take a, uh, let's see. I think it was about 5,000 more.
Okay.
Is what I want to say because as I was preparing the budget for 21. Um, I initially put in, um, a larger amount. Uh, thinking that there may be a slight increase. And I, as I recall, it was close to 50,000 and then, um. Shortly after I inserted that amount, of course, I received the actual policy code and then was able to. Uh, change the, uh, dollar figure. So it's, um, approximately 45,000.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, are there any questions about this? Seeing no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve the, um. 2021, uh, municipal property insurance policy renewal in the amount of $44,927. Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you very much, Alderman Nichols. I'll make the motion to approve the renewal from Impact on the 2021. Year of $44,927.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Alderman Repella and a second from Alderman Ted Grady to approve the renewal. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Clerk Crowe Kramer, could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carry eight zero.
Thank you. And with no other business, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Repella?
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Repella and a second from Alderman Ted Grady. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Nice job, Becky.
We are recording, Stan. Do we just, we want to keep going into the next committee?
Well, yeah, go right ahead. I, we still record.
Is everybody, uh, okay to, uh, go? Okay, um, tonight I'd like to, uh, call the, uh, Board of Public Works, uh, Committee to, uh, meet two times. Um, Clerk Crowe Kramer, could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Uh, I'm here.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi, here.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenix?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Um, first on our, um. Meeting tonight is the, um, who approve the, uh, minutes from the Board of Public Works meeting on October fifth, 2020. Do I have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October fifth, 2020.
Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Tom, uh, Ted Grady, um. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nate?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. Tonight, we have, uh, one discussion slash, uh, action item. Tonight, we have, uh, one discussion slash, uh, action item. And that, this is the sanitary sewer interceptor ownership. Uh, Director, um, Adam, if you could, uh, give us, uh, a talk on that, please?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, what you have here, in the city, we have three, uh, interceptors that run through the city that, uh, transport our wastewater to the sewage plant. Uh, there are two of them that, that we are looking at taking on ownership, uh, this evening. There is a third one, uh, just for everyone's information, that, that is a shared, uh, pipe that does, uh, transport wastewater from both, uh, Fox Crossings and the town of Harrison. Um, we're not quite ready to, uh, take on that ownership. Uh, there needs to be some more discussion there, but right now we're only looking at taking over two of them. And that would be the, the Lake Shore Interceptor, uh, which is Exhibit A, uh, or Exhibit, uh, B. And then, uh, the Garfield Avenue Interceptor, which is Exhibit A. Um, and this, uh, this sewage treatment or the Sewage Commission has been, uh, in discussion with us for a number of years. And, and the rationale behind it is sort of twofold. One, um, is, is their function is treating wastewater. Whereas us, uh, the municipalities, our function is really to collect and transport the wastewater to this, the treatment plant. Um, I mean, we already have, uh, uh, miles of, of pipe under the ground. Um, and the other part of this is that, uh, any maintenance, any repairs, any reconstruction for these pipes, although they are the ownership or currently owned by the Anina Manasseh Sewage Commission, all costs, all, all those costs would be sort of, would be passed along with, to us. Um, it is the responsibility of the municipality that they serve. Um, and in addition to that, uh, we are currently, um, participating in, uh, the maintenance of, uh, of these lines, the cleaning, um, locating, um, bypass pumping. We have some issues out on Lake Crest. Um, and by taking on the ownership of these, um, it provides us with some control as to what maintenance activities are to be performed and ultimately then that enables us to control the costs of, of, uh, of these types of activities. Um, and if Cory has anything you'd like to add?
Go ahead, Cory.
Cory, you're on. Director Cory?
Cory's having, uh, some mic issues.
Yeah.
Okay. Do, uh, okay.
Alderman Langdon?
Yes.
Um,
Attorney Cap?
If I could just interject, it's my understanding that for two thousand and twenty-one, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, I think you mentioned that they have some planned work. Uh, they, meaning the Sewage Commission, and whenever they have planned work, it, the City of Manassas doesn't have necessarily input into how that's being done, who's doing it, the cost, et cetera.
Correct.
But we do get billed for it.
Correct, again.
Oh, go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, correct. If, uh, looking at their, uh, their budget, they do have money, funds allocated for the Lake Shore, uh, interceptor. We did reach out to, uh, the sewage treatment plant, uh, Mr. Rob Frank, and, and they, uh, wanted to, uh, like us, because we have had some issues up on Lake Crest and, um, with this section of pipe, uh, had some plans to do some preliminary, uh, engineering and televising. Well, uh, we too, uh, because we are the folks that do get called, uh, when we do have some issues up there, and we are the ones that do respond to our residents up there, have also, uh, looked at, uh, doing some, uh, some investigating, uh, doing some, some research in regards to that. Um, and, and again, back to what, uh, Attorney Captain is saying is that, I mean, the only reason that we knew about this is that I happened to see it in the budget that wasn't shared with us. And, and as she had indicated, any, we weren't consulted or, and haven't been. Um, this way, by taking on the ownership, we do have control of not only what's being done, but then the cost of, uh, what is to be performed as well.
Thank you, Adam. Um, see Cory's still on. Does anybody, yeah, Alderman, uh, Ted Gaddy?
I don't know if Attorney Captain asked the question, or are you satisfied with what was said here?
Yes, I, I just recalled that, um, Director Alex had informed me about some work that was anticipated in two thousand and twenty-one. And it, you know, what they were planning on doing was something that we would not have done. Um, we would be going about it in a different fashion. Um, but yet, if ownership remains with the Sewage Commission, you know, they'll do what it is that they want to do, and however they want to take care of the issues and then just bill us without our input.
Thank you, Attorney Captain. Um, Alderman Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Serving on the commission, uh, I think this is a, a good choice for the city to move forward with this. And I appreciate, uh, Adam holding back on, on the third leg of the system, uh, because that system is, uh, shared by both, uh, villages. And, uh, after Sixth Street, it really does put a stress on our, on our whole, uh, system. And I think there's going to have to be a different formula or, uh, more of a shared responsibility with that. Because when you have those two villages, awesome, loading up our system and putting that, uh, the whole, uh, different capacity on our system. Uh, and then if something happens, because, uh, uh, that extra loads in our system, uh, something fails, uh, it would be fair to the City of Manassas for us just to, uh, to, to fix that. So, uh, the third one, we're gonna have to take some time here, uh, look at all the possibilities. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, Adam, uh, uh, Director Adam holding back on, on that decision on, on the third interceptor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to back up a little bit and learn more about how this process works right now. We've established that currently they own the interceptors and they maintain them. Um, I, I just need to better understand how it works currently.
Director Cory?
Can you hear me now?
You're on, yes.
All right. So to answer, um, Alderman Nichols' question, uh, currently, the interceptors are owned by, uh, the treatment plant. As far as any maintenance, um, they are, uh, responsible for the maintenance of those, but it is a direct bill back for whatever costs are incurred. Um, as an example, there was a manhole, um, a couple of years ago. It's actually within the graphic packaging facility. The casting, they wanted to replace the casting. We basically had no say in whether that casting should be replaced or shouldn't be replaced. Um, I did not feel it was worthwhile replacing, but that doesn't matter. Uh, they own the system. They turn around, bring in someone. They, uh, replace the casting and send us a bill of fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, if that was a casting with, when, within our roadway, um, with our personnel, you know, we'd be looking at a few hundred bucks to replace that casting. So that's the difference. Um, if they want to come in and they see a slight leak on a pipe, um, it might not warrant, um, doing any type of maintenance, in my mind. Um, we're, we're talking very large diameter pipe. So any type of a spot liner or a grouting process, things of that nature. Um, whoever their consultant or engineering firm would be, could come in and sell them on a product. And we would basically have no say in that maintenance or that type of repair to that pipe. You know, we could be talking, uh, tens of thousands of dollars with the size of pipe. Um, it's not easy access, similar to what we've done a lot of in the past. You would basically be required to dig off, uh, the top cone section of any of these manholes just to be able to get access to get this type of, uh, repair equipment in the manholes. That's just the sheer size of this type of stuff to get into this diameter of pipe. Um, it's, we, we have the ability to control the costs. We have the personnel. We have the knowledge. Um, we, we, we have the consultant that we've done a lot with. If we have questions, um, that we can bounce ideas off. I, I think this is in our interest to own this interceptor. Um, they're looking right now to duplicate some of the same stuff that we've already done with like the Lake Crest Interceptor, things of that nature. Um, as far as televising and, um, you know, right now, currently, we, we clean the Lake Crest Interceptor, um, or the Lake Shore Interceptor. We've done a fair amount of televising and cleaning on Garfield Interceptor, um, just as part of our, our general maintenance. You know, things of that nature, we're, we're already doing it. We, again, it's in our interest to own it.
Is their maintenance of the system, their maintenance and ownership of the system accounted for in the fees that, uh, we charge our residents?
Yes.
Be, yes. Because either we're out there doing the cleaning, or if they brought someone in to do the cleaning or do some additional televising or something of that nature, that's, we're, we're already responsible for that. You know, I wouldn't anticipate increasing our sewer rates because, um, we're now managing more pipe because we're already doing that, you know?
I think therein lies one of the big questions for me is if that is already incorporated into our rates that go, the sewer rates that go directly to the commission. So if we then take ownership of those, wouldn't there be less money going to the commission?
That doesn't go directly to the commission. Um, it would go to, to the commission if they do repairs and they haven't been doing those repairs. They haven't been doing the Digger's Hotline Locates that come in. Um, the Lake Crest Sewer, the Lake Shore Sewer, uh, there's been some issues with bypass pumping over the last handful of years. You know, we've done that. So we're already managing the system. Our, our fee that we pay the treatment plant does not incorporate that. If they come in and they want to start managing the Lake Shore Interceptor, they're going to then in turn, turn around and bill us for stuff that we've already duplicate what we've already done and the knowledge base that we already have with that system.
Yeah, but they set the rates. And if we are simply billed, then where does that money come from?
See, I'm sorry, I didn't, they set the rates.
They set the rates.
No. Actually, actually, we, we, we set the rates, Alderman Nichols, the sewage rate, um, based upon our cost of providing that utility. Um, they provide us with a budget as to what we normally pay on a monthly or an annual basis. And that's what kind of gets factored into our rates.
There's no incentive necessarily for them to fix this pipe.
Well, let me just cut to the chase and rephrase the question here. Other than owning it, other than owning it and maybe saving, saving, you know, you, you gave an example of a hundred dollars. You stated some things could be in the tens of thousands of dollars. What would be the benefit to the city for taking ownership of these pipes?
I, I think a lot of benefit. Um, we control the costs. They could come in and arbitrarily tell us there is a small joint or a joint in a pipe that has a minor amount of mineral deposits on that joint. We want to go in and we want to grow that pipe because we think there's infiltration coming in there. Okay, there, there probably is infiltration coming in at that joint. But at what cost? Okay, we, I, I, I forget exactly the fee that we pay for clear water at the treatment plant now. You know, yes, we want to eliminate the, the infiltration in the clear water entering our system, but at, at what cost? If they come in on a, on a thirty-inch pipe, thirty-three-inch pipe and say you need to do this, this, and this, um, and we want to approach it from a different standpoint, we have no say in that. They're going to hire a consultant at whatever rate they want to hire that consultant and whichever consultant that they want to hire. It might be someone that we don't trust. It might be someone that we don't agree with.
Are there other benefits?
What's that?
Are there other benefits, additional benefits, other than controlling costs?
This is, this is Adam. If I want to just jump in again and indicate, once again, it's, it's, they're in the business of treating sewage. And that's, that's what they're geared for. That's what they do. They have all the testing equipment down there. They're monitoring, measuring. But, you know, we're good at, and what we do is, is we do manage, uh, you know, miles of pipe in addition to what we're looking to take ownership of. And, and that is something that, that we're good at and what we do on, on a daily basis almost, a, and they do not. So I think that's, that to me is, is also a benefit.
And, and where I'm coming from is you're talking about changing a system that's been in place for decades. And so, um, and, and it, it seems to have been working up until this point. And so, um, I, I, I need you to convince me that this is really in the best, um, long-term interest of the city.
Can I, can I ask? Other than controlling costs, wh- why would there be reluctance in owning this pipe? We already manage miles of pipe. So we're, we're controlling the cost. That's, that's what we hear, that you, you want us to control costs and expense and things of that nature. And we have been doing that with this pipe in conjunction with the treatment plant. That's kind of been our unwritten agreement with them. Now the treatment plant wants to say, hey, we want you to own this pipe for, you know, like Adam said, they're in the business of treating water. They have to have, uh, a C-MOM, the same as we do. Our C-MOM states maintenance on pipes and managing, this is how we manage our system. We manage pipe. Now, if you take the treatment plant, they have to have a C-MOM, no different than we do. How do they manage their system now? If they have to manage pipe, that's another entity that they have to manage. Their C-MOM now is larger. And they're now responsible to the DNR to manage that portion of that.
You mentioned that they have, uh, asked us or requested us to take ownership of these?
We've been in discussions and they've been asking for, oh, since Mark Grackey was here. We've been in conversations with them about things of that nature.
I can answer that question.
Attorney Captain?
Um,
Attorney Captain, go ahead.
They have been asking for years. And we have consistently said absolutely not. Why would we want to do that? Why would we want to take that on? And, um, they were able to convince the other communities um, to take on that. To take on that responsibility and to take on ownership, that being Nina and. I'm trying to think, is it Fox Crossing as well? Yeah. And so we are, we are the ones left. And so they do have the ability to make it. Difficult for the city in regards to, they don't want it anymore. They don't want ownership, it doesn't do them any good, they just pass it on to the city. And. They have the ability to. Make us pay for it. If all of a sudden they start deciding. What kind of repairs and maintenance are going to be done on the interceptor? And, and then just bill us for it. But we had been telling them, no, 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 no. And then with the other communities taking ownership, we were the only ones left. And, and, and they're still trying to, to push that. So, you know, we can say no, and then we fall back into, you know, how are they going to react to that?
One of the items too that over the years we brought up numerous times. Was in regards to easements, a lot of these pipes run kind of cross-country. You know, they cut through the, the Banta Gilbert site, they, they go through different areas. And, and we had requested easements documentation and they, they kind of always said, yeah, we have easements, we have easements, we have easements. And they, it took them a while to put all of those documents together and they've, they've turned those documents over to us. Or copies of those documents, you know, indicating their, their easements for these pipes in these areas. So that was one thing that we requested over the last number of years. In addition to kind of some of what Pam is indicating also.
Do we currently pay for replacement of interceptors? Do they charge us for that as well?
No, they would charge us when they do it. So they could come in, like Adam had indicated earlier. They put stuff in their budget to do a bunch of work on the Lake Shore Interceptor and they failed to tell us about it. So we would have had zero money in our budget for that. And even if we don't take ownership today, they still could proceed forward with that work next year. And we don't have money in the budget specifically, or the proposed budget for 2021 specifically for doing additional work up there.
Are there other entities in the system that have shared interceptors, like the third one that we've talked about?
So that interceptor north of Sixth Street is owned by the Village of Fox Crossing. Because the City of Minasha does not have any sewer that comes into that interceptor until you reach Sixth Street. From Sixth Street, it is broke down. The Village of Harrison and the Village of Fox Crossings have an agreement for the portion of the interceptor north of Sixth Street. With Fox Crossings being the owner.
All right, I'm going to listen to other folks and maybe need some clarifying questions when.
Alderman Sevenick, you're up.
Thank you, Chair, I don't know, Alderman Taylor, were you gonna make a motion or if you have something?
I was just gonna add something, but go ahead if you want to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Oh, of course, way to go Stan. I lost my spot, go ahead James, you go first and then I'll, I'll do that, I'll look back to my agenda. Somehow I went looking at the Sixth Street map and then I lost my, my place.
Cory and Adam are right, and Attorney Captain. At this point, we don't have any say in things. And I noticed, you know, the commission that they use a lot of different contractors that we're not familiar with. And, and our knowledge in the City of Minasha with Cory and Adam and our department, how they do things. Is second to none and, and very cost savings too. And so I see an opportunity here that we're gonna, we're gonna save dollars when something happens. And also, we're gonna be in charge of our, of our budgeting on, on different items. And, and again, this other system, that's gonna take a little more because we're all sharing that system after Sixth Street. And we gotta probably come up with making that a third or a, yeah, a third for each community or something after that. But I can make a motion if you don't mind, that the City of Minasha. That the City of Minasha assumes ownership of the Garfield and Lake Shore interceptors.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman James Taylor, second by Alderman Stan Sevenick, Alderman Tom Grady.
I just would like to chime in and agree with James and look to the guidance of our Public Works Department that really knows these issues. I think we're beating this a little bit too much and we should move forward, it's almost a no-brainer.
Thank you, any other further discussion? Um, I actually have, oh Cory, go ahead.
No, I'm, I just had my mic on yet.
Okay. Um, so no further, I have something, I just want to say that try and give my two cents that. If we can control something. You want to control it. Same thing at home, if you got something you can control, you want to control it. So I am in favor of this also. I just wanted to mention that constituent Sandra DeBille Taylor. Asked in her public comments earlier. Why we would want to take control of the interceptors. And I hope she's still on and listening. And I hope that with all the discussion, she got her, what she was looking for. So with no further discussion. There was a motion and a second, Clerk Kromkremer, could we take a roll call please?
Hi.
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 Alderman Nichols.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick.
Hi.
Alderman Langdon.
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, no further business, I'll move adjourned.
I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second guy, Alderman Randy Repella, any further discussion? All those in favor of the, to adjourn signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.
So. Beef, oh, well, I guess we probably should make the motion. When we go back, but before everyone gets off of this Zoom meeting or meeting. Do you all have the link for the other closed session meeting?
Is that the one you sent this afternoon?
Yes. Looks like everyone got a second link. So Tom left, there's Tom. We'll call the City of Minasha Common Council Meeting back to order.
We have to log out and log back in with no link.
We should make the motion on this one and then we'll log out.
Okay.
Director Schrader, do you have any comments to make regarding the request to detach before we go into closed session? Yes, no, maybe? Director Schrader, you, you turned your light on, but I don't know if you're there. Did you have any comments to make? There, you're, you're there now.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hello?
Yes.
Mayor Marcus, can you hear me?
I can, but you can't hear me apparently.
He can hear you.
He's got to go over to his office. I don't know how we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to close this out.
Yeah, we gotta log out.
And then log into the other one.
Right. But we can't.
I'm enjoying your decorations.
Yeah.
She's already got your meat stand, she's got her Christmas up.
She's got her Christmas going.
She skipped her Thanksgiving.
She's got littler kids, that's why.
Yeah, I'm just a kid.
He's upstairs.
Technology is wonderful.
There's two already decorated, I just carried up the steps.
So Director Schrader's trying to get his mic to work.
Can you guys hear me yet?
Yes, we can.
All right, sounds good. So again, just to backtrack a little bit, so there was an item on the October 5th Common Council Meeting. From the Village of Fox Crossing. Basically, looking at a land swap between the village and the city. In reaction to a request to detach 509th Street. The existing Bubba's Pub on the corner of Racine Street and Ninth Street. So again, the, the city has taken, we did have a special Common Council Meeting two Fridays ago. And basically just looking at what we can do to react to that. And possibly provide a, a counter offer strategically, so. That is where I'm at.
Does anyone have questions for Director Schrader before we move to the closed session? Seeing none, does anyone wish to make the motion?
No, I got a, I got a question, Sam. Sam.
Mark has a question.
Yes, Mark.
Okay, thanks, um, so yeah, before you go into closed session. These are the four options.
Mark, we don't want to discuss the options at this point.
We can do that in the close.
Yep, then you're good.
Mayor, at this time, I'll, mayor, at this time, I'll move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. Investigating of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Request of Robert R. Smith to attach the 509th Street Minasha from the Village of Fox Crossing. And the Village of Fox Crossing Land Exchange Counter Proposal.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, I'm just a quick change because Ann said attach and it's detach.
Okay.
Where am I? Wait a second.
You just, you just, you just said detach and, or you said attach instead of detach.
Okay.
In your motion, so I just wanted to correct.
And whenever competitive bargaining reasons require closed session, detached 500, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to get that clarified, so.
Yep, good, good.
So motion is second?
Time the motion is, has been made and seconded. We take a vote and then we close this out and then go into that. Other email that you sent us, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So everyone knows that.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Hi.
Alderman Nappala.
Hi.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick.
Hi.
Alderman Langdon.
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero.
Might be a detach for them, but it would be an attachment for us.
Okay, I'm gonna shut this one down.
All righty, see you at the.
Bye, John Boy.